Okay, I'll bring this meeting to order. Yeah, I got it. Dr. Flannery, is there anything specific we need to start out with?
No, just the review of these proposals.
Okay. Alright, so I guess, hopefully, everybody had a chance to try to decipher all this. It was a lot for me. And I guess, I'm open to suggestions on how y'all wanna tackle this as far as... I think there's a lot of different ways to look at it, breaking it down. And I noticed everybody had their observations on cost and, you know, what they thought their savings were gonna be. And for me, you know, some of y'all have more experience with some of these companies than I do, for sure. So, I think a lot of it would come down to opinions on who we're comfortable working with, as well as the cost savings and that sort of thing. What they're doing, how they're doing it. So, I think there's a whole lot to cover. So, I don't know how deep y'all wanna go into it as a committee as far as per, you know, are we just gonna look at the cost savings per one school and pray it's right? Or we wanna go through each one and discuss the pros and cons? Or what do y'all suggest?
Well, I'm kinda hoping maybe we could take each one of them, break down their proposal, what their... Some of it, I hate to say this, it's hard for me to figure out and define.
Yeah.
Even, but what they were... What their projected savings was, or is, what their scope of work will be, and what it's gonna cost. And then, I think, once we dissect all four of those, whether we write it down on a board and so everybody can visually see it, or once we know what each one is proposing, and then we can break down what each group is gonna do with that. Because I'm pretty sure they're all a little different there in what their scope of work is. I mean, a lot of them are similar, but some of them had some things that were different. But that's just my suggestion. I know it's gonna take a little while to do, but I don't necessarily think we're in a time crunch.
No, I don't think we're in a big hurry. I mean, you ain't got something we gotta do, be done with any special time. But, one thing too, and I wanted to ask, as looking at this thing financially, and I guess I just didn't know before, and Dr. Flannery, you probably got a clear answer for me. But, when we look at this, even, I think, as responsible, you know, being responsible, once we do figure out who, then I think, as a board, we need to go back and look at what all schools we want to include in what we're gonna do from a long-term perspective. And then, I also think, what I didn't, I guess I don't fully understand is, when we go to the commission for financing, is that... I think you and Mr. Patrick talked about it a little bit, you know, if we can't really perform this stuff financially on our own without a company like this, can we?
No, I believe yes.
Because, now, the other thing is, I guess, one of my questions was, when we do, let's say we do go with one of these companies and we do put this into play, who recognizes that cost savings to pay it back? So, like, if you're... If you're, if I remember correctly, one of these said Daniel Boone was $300,000 a year. That's what it costs to operate it. So, if it's 290, how does Brad budget the savings to give back to the commission to pay for this program?
The commission won't say a dime under the dollar signs.
So, who pays for it, us or the commission?
We do with the cost savings.
Well, I know, what I'm trying to figure out is...
They guarantee, they guarantee that cost savings.
But who makes the payment?
The board.
The school system.
The board does. So, who's gonna monitor if it really worked or not?
Well, they guarantee what they say is gonna be cost savings.
Well, I get you, but who's gonna, who's gonna tell us? Who's gonna show me the savings? In other words, this book says, if one of these Chad said, you know, let's just say $300,000 a year, well, who's gonna monitor that it took 280 next year? Or if it took 325? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, they'll budget. You budget your power bill just like you would, and water bill, just like you would normally. And the what it costs, what they guarantee the savings, you make the payment on that. And I guess it's in the same line, right, Dr. Flannery?
Yeah. And Brad will have his eye on it for his success. And I'm not sure, Phil, if you can jump in here, I'm not sure what part the company plays in. I guess, in their...
Company will, any of one of these companies will be monitoring what our bills are.
Yeah.
And monitoring the uses we have.
The whole time?
Probably.
See, that's what I'm wondering, like, so like, for example, if the TBA increases prices. So, ESG says hypothetically that it's gonna be, you're gonna save $20,000 this year, but the price increase went up, $20,000, and there's no savings, then what do we pay the bill with?
Well, I mean, most of your proposals will have a cost increase built in.
Okay.
Yep. Russ said they have one.
Most of them are 3%.
3%, okay, okay. So, we just gotta be responsible to keep up with what we supposedly are saving to... Okay. Todd, I have this question I have, sorry. Get too far off, but... So, do we have, I mean, do we have a way to do what Todd's saying? As far as put this out for, to compare, is there, does anybody have an idea on how to, a neat way to...
Have a board.
Propose, to write these down, or... And I guess we'll have to get them. Mr. Patrick, did you have anything specific? I mean, did you come up with anything special, or...
Don't have anything special, I just think, most of all of these companies are, they're basically working on the same theory of savings. They have models they go by. And as they get in the program, and see, this is the key to it, is after they get in, whatever the board chooses, that's when, that's when the things start happening, where you would say, "Well, it's feasible to do this part on this building, but not on this building because the payback's not quick enough." And if the payback doesn't make it, then we can't make it. And if we can't make it, then they can't put it in the program. It's just, it's... It's tough to compare the different companies because all these things are variable. You know, like I said, I went with one building so that we could see what they could do with that one building. And then, we have to assume they'll carry that through the rest of the program, depending on what you would like to see done.
So, if we start with, like, for example, Todd, you threw it out there. If we're trying to figure out what would be the best way to bring this, you know, to life, do we start with, do we say, "Okay, you know, this is in, this is Wesco"? Do we, do we start out with Wesco's 15-year plan, savings proposal, and then move, and then go to Siemens and so on, for starters? And kinda look at the big picture first, and then back into it? You feel like that's a good way to do it?
That's how I think we should.
I think so, if you're asking.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking for answers here. So, I don't know. Jeff, you said we got a board, is that how y'all wanna do that? Put it up on a board, or what? Or is everybody wanna keep notes and go through it?
You just said we're starting with Wesco.
Ah, you want to, that's fine, yes. Let's just, I got it open, I got them all open. Let's just start Wesco and see what, so we're gonna say, I'm making that here. So, we're gonna look at the 15-year. Because I think that's what all of them did, but not... Now, I have to go through these.
Are you gonna put this on the board or what?
Yeah, we is gonna try to.
We're gonna give it a shot, I'll tell ya.
We're gonna give it a shot.
I don't know how successful I'll be, but...
And you can, or you can just keep notes to yourself, but, and if you got the answer, throw it out there. What I was looking for, Chad, was Wesco's 15-year cost savings, etc., whatever anybody wants to chime in with.
Okay.
There you go.
So...
Where anybody wants me.
Anywhere you wanna go, I guess where they can say is fine.
I don't know where anybody sees.
How's that? Sparking up.
So, if we're reading this right... Well, biggest thing, just so we can have it up there, keep up with it, I think.
What's your first category you wanna look at?
Do y'all wanna, do y'all wanna do, like, for example, this one right here, they've got their 15-year cumulative savings of $15,918,255. And then, they've listed their, I guess that's return of investment, is 4.6, is that right?
Wesco.
You see that, Todd?
Yeah, yeah, there's a little hard to see.
It looks like you got 15-year cumulative savings, $15 million. You see it?
$15,918,255, right?
Yeah. And then, there are, I don't know if we wanna go as far as the return of investment or not, or term. I'll just stick with...
Well, it looks better, 4.6 years.
Yeah.
Does it have on there what the cost is of the upgrades, the total cost of the upgrades?
It says, if I'm reading this right, the investment, $6,590,200.
Okay.
We're looking at 15-year payoff, 15-year, 15-year savings.
The savings on theirs is 15 million, that's what Chad listed, was $15,918,255.
$15,900?
Yeah, 255. And then, the total...
15.9 million.
Yes, yes, sir. I don't think we need to list the total annual, that really don't matter. Um, 15-year capital savings, it doesn't matter.
Investments.
6 million, yeah, we do need that. The investment.
We need that.
6.6, basically.
Wesco, 6.6?
Yeah.
Right, I can see.
Yeah.
You may have to find somebody to interpret it.
That's okay. Now, let's do...
If somebody can do better, I'm sure I'll share or give up.
No, I think you're doing great. Let's do, let's do... You wanna, you wanna go to Siemens?
That's all we want, so...
Well...
Investment in the savings?
You go to Benjamin's, you go Wesco so far, you wanna go to another company and find their investment in Siemens?
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, and back into it, I guess. So...
Just go ahead and pick one, then there is...
I got Siemens, do Siemens.
9.3, the total.
Out of 15 years?
Now, that's project cost. Right?
Well, I'm looking, I see...
The project costs, it says it's 1.35. And then, the savings is 100,000, is that correct? Is that what you think?
Looks like on page 11, look on page 11 of Siemens, Chad.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was on...
Looks like 15-year savings is 11,610,709.
Don't include operational savings, do not include operational savings. That takes money out of your maintenance part of the budget.
So, what is this one right here?
So, you want energy savings?
Be 1.6.
Is that...
For 15 years.
15 years, 1.6 million, looks like.
I can't be right.
No, I think on page 11, it says 10.8.
Yeah.
Why would it be two, why would it be two different things?
14, well, I seen that the other day, too.
So, what's the difference in this and the next, page 13?
Alright, page 14, Chad, says...
I said 13.
One of them is David Croft, Daniel Boone High School, the other one's the school system.
Okay, but what's...
Okay.
So, is all that combined into this one chart on page 11? So, is, is 13 and 14, is this the combined on that page?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
So, it says on this right here on page 13, "As shown in the following cash flow, the savings potential for Daniel Boone High School will self-fund the project of approximately 1.350 over a term of 15 years." That's what I'm, that's what I was looking for, that ain't no way that compares to 15 million.
So, page 11 is actually, is the combination of page 13 and 14.
Y'all tell me what to write down.
Alright, yeah.
Okay.
So, total savings, that's what we had to begin with on page 11. Total savings, 15 years, is 11,600, just say 11,600. You wanna round up?
Whatever.
Round, 11, say it.
I thought he said not to count the operational savings.
I did.
So, you need the energy savings, which is 10, 835, 11.
Just put 11 million, let's round it up. Fair enough.
Hey, Jason.
Yes, sir.
And you ain't right, because that's all Washington County schools.
Maybe go to page 10.
Right, page 10 is the only place we get the...
Thank you, Chad.
1.7 million dollars savings.
See, that's what, that's what we're looking, well, how's Wesco at 15 million?
That can't work.
Siemens is 1.6.
The Siemens, or the Wesco has got to be industry-wide, which must be worker-saving.
It has to be, because I seen that the other day, looking through these, and I thought something don't add up.
Yeah, it says Daniel Boone High School.
Got it all broke down there.
How do you go from 4, 1,600, to 15,000?
Well, let's read this paragraph. "Washington County Schools is currently consuming approximately $2,330,246 annual in combined utility cost. First-year energy savings in school projected would be $582,562. In addition to upgrading the failing equipment, Washington County Schools could realize operational savings in the amount of $67,000 annually." So, these two have to both be...
I call it, what Wesco says.
That was, I read that out of Siemens, Chad.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, looking at Wesco's numbers, it is just for Daniel Boone High School.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Now, Phil, what is E and O savings? Is that energy and opportunity?
Operation.
Energy and operation?
Yeah. Where do you see operations?
E and O, that's exactly.
I don't wanna mess with those numbers. Unless y'all wanna drop a magnet fan or something like that, I'm not into, I'm not into that.
See, how can they, how can they do all, like, even on page 11 down here in the graph, it says Washington County Savings Analysis, All Properties? How did, how can they give you that on All Properties if they didn't go do a tour of All Properties?
They're just taking assumed, they're taking an assumed savings across the system.
We don't want some.
Well, we only want it's boon.
That's the reason I did it, now, I can't, I can't help what extra they gave you.
That's a 50-year-old building, we've got buildings less than that.
Yeah.
I can't help what extra they gave you.
They didn't make it easy on us, I know that, by doing what they did here. I mean, we asked for just... It's worse, I think.
So, if we don't understand it, it ain't clear, do we throw it out?
We're just gonna have to do the best we can, I guess, and, I mean, it's...
I mean, but... Chad, you're saying this, this Wesco, it does, it does say Daniel Boone High School.
By looking at theirs, they're saying there's a $6.5 million investment, and the return of 15 years is gonna be 15.9.
That's right.
Well, they ain't no...
They've already included, I mean, they're, they're...
It says Daniel Boone High School, it doesn't say y'all school.
Right.
Well, what's the, what's the difference in the scope of work between Siemens and Wesco, then? For Siemens, the only...
Wesco gets a little fuzzy, because it's pretty vague on what you're, what you're redoing. I mean, their recommended was...
What else they got?
Well, their biggest investment was, is 3.6 in the HVAC.
I mean, the way I read it, Siemens says approximately 1.8 million savings is Daniel Boone High School, and 11 for the district over the next 15 years. So, theirs is 1.8 million. If y'all want, I mean, if you wanna take what the word says in black and white, that's the way you can do it, or I'm not assuming anything.
Alright, so, hold on to that file. So, you're, you're saying they said 1.8 million is the savings?
That's what I read on page 2.
And the initial cost is? How much?
Yes, there's approximately 1.8 million at Daniel Boone High School, and 11.6 in the entire district.
Over 15 years?
Yep. That's savings.
Now, Wesco said... Wesco, Daniel Boone High School.
You can see how much work is already done, that's on, that's on page 13, right? Or no, page 12, that's 1.35 million.
I think our specification said give us the most savings on that building that we could get with the work they could get done and pay for, right?
Yeah.
So...
Worst case, we wanted to break even. I just had a nice little summary, and said...
That is on page 12 for Siemens.
Are you still on Wesco?
No, on Siemens, this page 12 of what they're willing to do after you go to Wesco. What they're willing to do.
On 5? Well...
What do you like to start with?
On 3.
Go back to 3.
Heck, only way you can do that, flipping right there, but if you wanna compare apple to apple, you gotta write down every item.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's why I was just kinda, I was wondering, my thing was, I wanted to see, hey, we're, this is the projected cost that you'll have in it, and this is gonna be your savings, and, you know, the term, 15 years or whatever. And then, once we see, hey...
Then we go back.
Yeah, then we can see.
Right.
But we can't even get to the...
We need to carry on with that, right? Well, what threw us off was this 1.3, I mean...
That's what I'm saying, I mean, it's, I think I would've put it there.
How do you even...
So, where it says the scope of work cost for Daniel Boone High School is 3,150,000. Is that...
No, there's...
No?
I think you're on the first one, if the 1.35, you're doing this by cost savings. Now, the second, it said the following longer payback facility improvement measures could be, could be available additional cost savings funded. But what the 11 million, or 1.8 million dollars is just to fund that 1.3 million dollar profit, the way I read this today, is it not true? Because he says if you add on this other, then you're getting this 3.15, like the numbers say.
Okay.
On page 20 of Wesco's proposal, it says that the energy cost savings at Boone would be 2,707 over 25 years, and what Chad said, over 15 years, it's 1,620,000, which is darn near identical to Siemens.
Yeah.
It's within 54,000, $54,000, maybe the same number Siemens came up with, but less.
And that's on page 20.
That's on page 20. And that's, that's the only way I think you can get at apples and apples between Siemens and Wesco.
Yeah. Second paragraph. Utility rate savings for Daniel Boone High School loans, the result of...
2,707,25, and then down 15, it was 1,620, compared to the savings, 1,600.
Alright, so that's, so that 15.9 is wrong.
Well, it's wildly different, because it plays on the operator charges. If you use just the energy savings on page 20, that's, you have to notice all of that.
Right.
You don't have the channel, which reminds you of any maintenance.
So, you're saying that's $54,000 difference from Wes, from Siemens?
Right, Siemens looks to be about $1,850,000 higher in the savings.
What page was that on?
That's on page 20 of the Wesco proposal, and I'm comparing that to the one on page 10 of the Siemens proposal.
10 of Siemens, do you hear that, Chad, Mitch, David?
Yeah, but I... Yeah, I heard it.
He's saying, if you take, if you break down what's on page 20, second paragraph, if you divide it out, it's within $54,000 of Siemens' projection on page 10. For 15, for 15 years, Dr. Flannery?
Yes, I gave you the number of 25, so you have to break it down.
I think that, no, I'm gonna have to write that.
Okay, so Wesco, can you give us that number again?
That's right.
1,620,000.
Man, 620,000 years.
But that's just all the electrical savings, the energy savings, the energy savings.
Would you very well test the bulk of the savings, I mean, there's gonna be some water.
There's quite a bit of water. I mean, you need, I mean...
Well, it says utility.
Utilities is the word you wanna look for, and that includes everything, water, electricity, and gas.
That's what, that's what he's got on page 20.
Right.
So, you're saying that does not line up with Siemens on page 10?
If you add in gas and water, you probably see that Siemens is...
See, now, here's the 15-year savings, the energy savings, 1.674, what Dr. Flannery's done, took, turned around over 25 years.
Page 10, Siemens proposal just says energy, it doesn't say anything about water.
Right.
And if you look at the pie chart, well, no, it does say water conservation, conservation, but it's only $14,000.
Well, if you, can you add all those numbers up in that draft right there? Does that make it...
Well, it certainly does, I have about $100,500.
15 years. What's that?
About 25?
That's 15 years, that'd be 1.6, something medium.
Yeah, but see that, yeah.
Right, Dr. Flannery?
I'm sorry?
If you take that chart right there, 1.100,000... If you take that chart right there, one-point, one-hundred thousand five, or a hundred thousand, five-hundred-one times fifteen years...
I guess it's an accurate way of looking.
That's almost one-point-six, is it not?
Yeah, that's what they came up with.
Right. So Chad, you see that?
Yeah, I will.
So that's got water conservation controls, domestic additional measures, HVAC replacement main, HVAC... So it's got it all in there at the one-point-six, even though it says energy savings.
Yeah, but look at page twelve, that actually is what they're actually gonna do.
Alright.
On the Siemens. Page twelve is actually one-point-three million dollars, one-point-three-five, and then if you go down and add the other, it's one-point-eight, which comes up to three-point-one, one-five, if you want to do all of that.
It does, that's what it says. So they're saying you spend three-point, if that's the case, you spend three-point-one-five and you get a hundred thousand a year savings?
Yes.
Which is one-point-six, so that means it's out-of-pocket one-point-four or something.
Well, that's the reason, I think, that they came out and said, if you do this top part, it pretty much will fund itself at one-point-three-five. But if you want to go in there and do the rest, which is all geothermal work, that's the reason why you can't just do one-point, not all of it, because it doesn't make sense. So that's the reason, that's the one-point, I, I was, is that, that's the way I read it. Is that not the way you understand it, please?
Let me read it again. Following longer payback facility improvement measures to be implemented with the availability of the additional energy savings fund.
Wonder what they mean by additional energy savings fund. That means write a check, don't you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too. I mean, you know, everybody's got their little words they like to use.
Yeah.
That might be the, that's a part of the bond issue where it puts us in greater fear.
Yeah.
We can handle some of that.
Well, that doesn't, that doesn't help us make a decision, is what I'm saying, is that it's the decision that we have to make here, because every one of them's gonna have additional energy savings availability. But we've got, uh, they're down to one, and then we'll decide whether or not we want to, you all will decide whether or not you want to put more money in.
Oh, Tony.
How's this going, Todd?
Great. See, this is why we needed to do it, because I don't think anybody truly understands...
Help out. So we...
Help out.
Huh? And on one page four? Without all this other, bring him on.
Hey, is there, is there any way to ask these people to give us exactly what we want, the savings, the insert, and the total work?
That's what we were just talking about. Let me explain this. Let me just try this. Let's ask these four folks to give us the annual savings. Annual savings for that, that building. We don't want, we don't want any other buildings, we don't want estimates from the other buildings. We want to know what that building will cost us, I mean, what we will save on that building in one year. Then we want to know what we'll save on that building in fifteen years without operational funds included, correct?
Yeah.
Then we want to know what the investment is, how much that's gonna cost. And then we want to know what the scope of work will be on that building, and not what it might be on the other buildings. We don't want to know that if we add this much money, we get that much more. We want to know what that'll pay for, the way it stands. Is that correct?
One pay for work.
Got four questions. They ought to be able to put that on one to two sheets of paper for us, is that correct?
We would hope.
One, I mean, nice little chart.
One little...
One little chart.
I'm with you. Does everybody like that idea?
I love that idea.
And we can let them get that back to us in a week.
And then we can look at their scope of work after we've seen their numbers and decide, hey, this best fits us, or this is what we're looking for as a system.
Let me throw something else out there for all you all. Also, I think that's a great idea, because I think that's the only way we're gonna be able to do it, because...
We're not, we're not engineer enough to, to, uh...
I'm not.
To divide.
Me either, me either.
No, it's trickery, too.
Right.
I think the other thing, once we get, once we get that back and get through it, we need to have a plan on how we're gonna... Let's say if all four of these come back at the same number, we gotta have a plan on how to pick one.
Will that not be the scope of work?
Yeah, I think that's where we break it down, committee or a board or whatever, and try to...
At that point, do we not have a workshop?
Yeah, some of the stuff we're not gonna do. I've seen some things I don't think we're necessary to do, but that's just my opinion.
We can take the practicality of what we want to do.
Yes.
And what the savings we'll achieve with that, and it'll pay for it. That's what we want to find. We may want to look at, we may want to look at the work they've done in the area for some of them, work they've done in the state. What do y'all think? I mean, it's up to you all, what you want to know.
I like it.
If you don't, that's fine, too. If you don't want to know those things, that's okay with me.
I just need to dumb down to those four questions.
Those four questions. Yes, ma'am.
That, right to the point.
Whatever the committee decides, that's what you all can write down and...
Do I have to make that?
Ms. Jennifer.
You got him, Jennifer.
Ms. Jennifer Nusswill.
Hey, guys, y'all okay with that?
Three or four questions were there, I heard it was four.
We're gonna say, we're gonna say annual savings.
Is it operational or energy?
Total.
Utility only, utility savings only.
No operational savings.
Utility only.
Okay, because I was gonna say, but that operational is subjective.
Alright, so you...
Well, and the oper, the operational really isn't gonna materialize, but Phil's just gonna use it on something else.
Right.
So, yeah, I think you just look at your hard utility cost savings.
Yeah, okay. So you got annual savings, utility only, what we'll save in fifteen years?
Utility only.
Utility only, cost out-of-pocket, and exact scope of work.
Yeah.
You need any, y'all add anything, or?
No.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Let's not, let's not say cost out-of-pocket. It's not out-of-pocket, it costs, costs scope of work. Costs for scope of work.
So listen, so then three things.
Right, it's cost for scope of work.
That would be on our investment, right?
Yeah, where you're invested. Which you...
And, and it would be nice, I like how they have Johnson Controls or Low Heating right here. It says annual interest rate is two-point-four, that's assumption. The energy escalation is three percent. So, I, I think we need to figure out how much they're figuring, you know, the TBA cost is gonna go up, and also what the interest costs will be, would you?
But, hey, Chad, are they going to, are they gonna finance this, or is that just their debt as to what the, the county's cost of money is gonna be?
I think it's just a assumptions, I mean, it actually says assumptions.
Now, a couple of them offered to finance it, though.
Who did?
Wasn't it Siemens, one of them?
I think so. Some of them cut their own in-house financial wizards.
Maybe in Johnson Controls. I know Siemens, I'm pretty sure Siemens said they could fund it if they had to.
Energy Systems absolutely will not.
No.
Any, Energy Systems will not, but I think Siemens will, and I ain't so sure. I almost think Johnson Controls will.
As well, I'm looking back here, I thought they did say that, yeah.
So basically, Chad...
Regardless of what, I mean, regardless of what they do, that really just becomes, you know, what's their cost of money? You know, the county can borrow it at one-point-eight, why would you pay Siemens at two-point-four? I mean, it's still gonna be debt to the county, whichever way you go.
Right.
It'd just be nice what they're figuring, coming up with their numbers, you know, I mean...
Right, right.
So what, what rate?
Is everybody, is everybody careful with the three percent utility inflation cost? Because that, that's where a big part of the savings is coming from.
That's correct.
Utility costs only go up one or two percent, and you don't, I don't know, have, you're digging both.
Yeah, I just...
In your models.
It doesn't matter as long as all of them use the same percentage.
So we want to set that? Would y'all like to set that? Rate of increase on utilities?
Set it at three.
Huh?
Let's set it at three.
Then they can all figure on three, and if it's...
Yeah.
Think?
As long as they're all the same, that's the way we can put it.
Okay. It's up to you guys, and ladies.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree. They've got, they've got both, they've all got to be projecting the same salary, same, uh, energy increase per senior.
So we're gonna put energy...
It's different, and it gets way out of line.
Energy increase set at three percent. Correct me, Mitch?
Yeah, that, that'll work, you know, over fifteen years, you know, will it go up that much or not? I don't know, you know, whatever it is, it's what it is.
Well, it'll make the numbers right anyway.
We can see it.
And then we need to tell them what our, our interest calculations are. We need to give everybody that number as well. If it's two-point-four, or two-point-eight, or three-point-oh, or do we not? Everybody's gotta be figuring from the same numbers as far as that part goes.
Yeah, just give it to an A for some.
I would agree with that.
How much?
Then you get down to what they're gonna do, and what they're gonna, what they're gonna save us, you know?
You're asking for the interest rate?
We can set, we can set the interest rate they figure on. That way, everybody's...
It may not be that, but it's okay.
But it's the same with all companies.
They calculate it out.
Then what we're gonna be looking at is actual savings they can give us for the scope of work. Right?
Yep.
So...
Because like Mitch says, counties gonna go find their own interest rate.
Well, Mitch, what do you think, set the rate at? Two and a half?
Uh, I think that's probably pretty high right now. No, I think you, I think you go two, or, I mean, I, I wouldn't go much more than two percent right now. I mean, the economy we're in, treasury, I mean, rates are still going down.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, let's just say two percent.
What if they don't want to figure off that, because they know they can't do that? I mean, is it...
Well, they can just leave it out. We can ask them to leave it out completely, and then we gotta figure it in.
They'll figure it.
Somebody's gotta figure it on two percent.
They'll say, now, if we get better interest rate, we'll be able to do some more work.
Yeah.
And we know that. Right?
Yeah.
Because we won't be spending it on money, we'll be spending it on project.
Yeah.
If they all figure on the same numbers, then we'll be fine.
Ah.
That's for me.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Ah.
Roger, roll.
Make sure you thank them for making it useful for us.
Hey, you're not getting ready to...
Unless you got something. Well, yes, we sent that to Dr. Flannery, y'all correct me if I'm wrong. They get, we voted, I think we talked about last time about giving Mr. Hudson permission to start bidding out the project, or coming up, coming up with a cost for us to approve, a budget number to allow them to bid it out, if we so choose.
Is that gonna be available August fourth, maybe?
No, no. What do you think?
I don't know, he told me two weeks, and that's been a week ago. Be close, we'll see. I'll ask him, I may give him a call and ask him if he can maybe kick it up a notch.
So we have to, we're asking him to give us a price, and then we have to bid it out?
Budget number, and then, yeah, we'll have to bid that.
Maybe we'll get an idea.
So we're just getting a budget number?
Yeah, to see if it's even...
He's not giving us the number that he can do it for.
No, sir, no, ma'am.
Phil, you got seven out of nine board members here. Why don't you give everybody an update on what's going on with Gray's gym?
Okay.
Gray's who?
Gray Elementary, we had a leak on our geothermal system as it comes into the gym, unfortunately, and it flooded the gym. We thought we'd got it quick enough, scooped up the water and vacuumed it up, and about five days later, it showed itself. So, we have started a claim with the insurance company to replace that gym floor. I look for that to happen soon. They'll send an adjuster, and then we'll have to find a person or two to give us a estimate on what it would cost to. Reflow the gym, and we'll probably have to go all the way from the concrete up. Now, having said that, those bleachers have also been in there for I don't know how long, and I'm not happy with the way they operate, and neither are the folks that have to get them in and out every day. And there are some issues with barricades and hand railing that we need to address. So this would be an excellent time to replace the bleachers, so we just take them completely out, replace the floor, and then come in here with new bleachers set right on top of them, that are electric. And up to...
Whose school is this?
Gray.
Gray Elementary, middle.
So what do you need to estimate?
What I'm do, what I'm gonna, what I'm going to do is, of course, go ahead and start the claim with the insurance company, and get that ball rolling. Then I'm gonna get a budget number for new bleachers, okay?
And then when we bring the capital projects list back to the full board, just fold that whole project in, the brick, the bleacher, and the floor, all of it, into one capital request that we can take to AGW and just get it...
If the, well, if the floor's covered by the insurance company, that'll just be five-hundred dollars, so we'll, we'll cover that. We'll just have the bleachers and the gray brick.
Which is just a great argument to put before AGW, a big jump this is going. And this, it's time to get this done.
Bleachers, is that both sides?
Yes. Yeah, we'll go back with what we've got.
Ah, that it? Chad, you got something?
No, I was saying, we found anything but grates or, or like rails on the side.
It's just, it's just, we're not sure they're really good and safe.
Any update on the bats?
We've issued a PO to a company out of Bristol, Tennessee, and he should be moving in there shortly to rid the building and run the bats off.
Okay. I just didn't see a timeline of any hope to finish up. Do you know if there is one?
I'm sorry? Timeline, I have no idea. I have no idea. I mean, there's, it's a drawn-out process where they'll come in and they'll count the bats as they move in and out, and then they'll come back and do their scope of work, which is put in bat excluders, some screen wire on some places where we think they might be trying to come in. All of his work is guaranteed for two years, that his work will not fail, but now if the bats find another place to come in, that's a different scope of work.
So are they gonna relocate these bats?
They'll relocate themselves. They'll just not be able to get back in our building.
So the ones that are in the building?
They'll have, it's called an excluder. They'll be able to go out a hole, but they can't come back in.
Oh.
That's the way I understand it. Now, I'm...
Interesting.
Yeah. Rogers Wildlife, P L number nine-five-four-seven.
Alright, we got it. Everybody good?